Okay, good evening and welcome to the Winter of School Committee meeting on Monday, October 25th, 2021. The meeting is being held in the Harvey Harry Room here at the Winter of Town Hall. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Harry, here. Mr. Boncory, Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swob, here. Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
Here. President Boncory called me earlier this evening to tell me that he was going to try to make it to the meeting, but he was out of town and headed this way, but was not sure if he would make it. Okay, this meeting will be recorded and maybe televised live. Pledge allegiance. Ms. Swob, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that everyone remains standing for a moment of silence for Dolores Fabiano, a tireless advocate for our students and community, and mother of former school committee member, James Fabiano, and of course Frankie Fabiano. Thank you. Next up is executive session. The chair anticipates going into executive session to conduct strategy sessions for contract negotiations for non-union personnel or contract negotiation with non-union employment agreements of the school superintendent this evening. So I'll ask for a-
Motion to an executive session.
Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob, yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. We'll be returning to live session after we finish our executive session. Okay, good evening. We're back from executive session. At this point, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none. I'd like to ask that someone make a motion that we take new business out of order.
Motion?
Second.
Well, first-
New business up, sorry.
Out of the, out of the, take anticipated vote for superintendent's contract out of order. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swob?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob, yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to ratify the superintendent's new contract?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? And before we begin discussion, I would like to ask if we could allow Paul Hartnett to bring us through the agreement so that's, we have the information in front of us, and then if there's any further discussion, of course, we will have it.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. The proposed employment agreement for the superintendent that is in front of you was negotiated by the subcommittee over two sessions. By way of comparison, the current employment agreement for the superintendent began in March of 2018 when she was hired as the new superintendent. It was a four-year agreement that expired on June 30th of 2022. It was initially a three-year agreement with an option for the school committee and the superintendent. It turned it into a four-year agreement, which you exercised in January of this year. This proposed agreement would take effect on July 1st of 2022 and run through June 30th of 2027. The current salary for the superintendent on the salary line item is $175,265. There is also a lump sum payment in the agreement that was reached in January of $4,000, which brings the total compensation line item for this school year to $179,265. The current agreement that is before you would be, would pay a salary, an annual salary as of July 1st of 2022 of $191,000. The $4,000 lump sum payment that was part of this year's salary is, there are two ways of looking at it. Either it gets rolled in or it's eliminated, but the bottom line is, under this agreement, for the first year, the superintendent would be paid $191,000. As part of the negotiations during the subcommittee, there was conversation between the two members of the committee and the superintendent about comparable school districts and what superintendents in those school districts were making oases. And the comparable data that we had was data that for the 2021 school year. And we looked at 14 communities that were comparable in terms of size, and the superintendent was the lowest-paid superintendent in that group of superintendents. In 2021, Superintendent Howard, her compensation line item was $167,718. Of the 14 communities we were looking at, the next lowest was $185,673. So she earned almost eight, well, she earned essentially $18,000 less than the other superintendents. The communities we were looking at in terms of size were Stonem, Saugus, Swanskill, Deandres, Ashland, Georgetown, Peavody, Everett, Revere, Lynn, Canton, Winchester, and the Volk. Some of them are not necessarily the same size, but they're close geographically. So the factors were school size and geographic. And in 2021, nine of the superintendents in those communities were making over $200,000 in their compensation line item. Again, the superintendent in 2021 was making 162, excuse me, $167,718. So while it looks like it's a significant raise when you look at the 179 to the 191, but in reality, she is, in all likelihood, still going to be the lowest-paid superintendent among the group of school systems that we were looking at. So under the compensation package for this five-year agreement, the first year would be $191,000. The second year would be a wage, a compensation increase of 1.5%. Year three would be a 2% wage increase. Years four and five would be a wage re opener with negotiation between the committee at that point in time and the superintendent, but the floor of the wage increase would be no less than 2%. Could be higher, but it would be no less than 2%. The other changes to the agreement in front of you is that we, there is, the superintendent has represented that it's not her intention to take health insurance benefit that's offered to all-town employees, but there is some language in the contract that's going to be removed from the current agreement. She'll have the option, if her family situation changes and she needs the health insurance, she'll be able to take the health insurance in the future under the same conditions as any other employee in the town of Winthrop. That language is being removed from the agreement. We made some technical changes in terms of her goals. We changed the dates that she's going to submit those goals to the super, to the school committee, and that date, her goals have to be submitted by September 30th. It's currently July 31st. That September 30th goal is consistent with every other type of goal that's being used currently in the district. The school committee will have it until November 30th, too, in fact, except that goal, make your own recommendations or an adjustment. So there will be, it's still a 60-day period that exists right now. We're just changing when that 60-day period is going to take place. Other than that, the remainder of the contract is the same. She has a, a benefit, a 403 benefit, which is the public sector version of a 401K. That benefit's been in the contract since she began in 2018. That benefit hasn't changed. Her sick leave hasn't changed. The vacation law, it hasn't changed. All those benefits remain as static as to what she was earning under her current agreement. So if you have, if you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them.
Just want real quick-
Ms. Swob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, I understand that the current split in health insurance is 85-15.
Yes.
We don't, since we don't negotiate that, I take it, if that were to change in the town, it would be, she would receive this benefit, the same benefit as the town would receive.
If, if there was a change townwide, there, there would have to be actually then a re opener with the superintendent. If, in fact, she is taking insurance, because remember, she's currently not participating in the insurance plan, but if she were to take the insurance, it would be consistent with the 85-15 split, which is in place right now. It would have to be negotiated at that point if the town were to change its 85-15 split.
So she'd be negotiating with us or the town?
No, she would be, have to negotiate with the school committee because the language in the contract makes reference to the 85-15 split.
Does anyone have any further questions or discussion? Hearing none.
I-
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Powell?
Would like to, to say something that, that Lisa has, Ms. Howard has been an exemplary superintendent and has put in a tremendous amount of time over the last two years that were unanticipated in terms of working nights and working weekends and, and, and pushing off her own vacations and her own time off and even her own medical needs in order to accommodate our schools and what has happened. I mean, there, I am in support of this increase because of what she has contributed to the school and what I believe that she's going to be the contributor going forward. And I would also point out that there are numerous searches going on for superintendents, and I would like to, one of the reasons I'm in favor of the four-year contract is the stability that it will bring to our town and also because I think that if she, if she would, if we don't retain her, there are plenty of people who would like to benefit from her experience.
Okay. I feel the same way. I think it's great that we have someone that actually is an alumni of our own system, that has risen to be the superintendent of our district. And for all the hours, as you say, weekends, holidays, when COVID first started and there was so much uncertainty, you were there getting answers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I know that because I spoke to you seven days a week as the chairman. So I'm in full support of ratifying this contract, and I think that we're lucky to have you, and we really appreciate all you've done for the district.
Thank you.
Any else have any discussion?
I, I would just like to raise one issue that Mr. Matucci brought to the table when we were negotiating the subcommittee, and that is the current state of superintendency in the openings currently in the state of Massachusetts. During our subcommittee meetings, Mr. Matucci had done some prior work, contacted the Mass Association of School Committee to actually determine how many superintendent positions are open in the state, what searches are going on, and it became obvious from that research that in fact, having an incumbent superintendent, ensuring the consistency and continuity was an important thing that was discussed when we were actually negotiating this employment agreement at the subcommittee level.
Don't let that change your mind.
That's true. We want to get the ink on the contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say that I appreciate the time and the effort that this committee has put into pushing me beyond, really beyond any place that I thought I could ever be. And I appreciate you understanding what's really happening in the world of education and with the superintendents across the Commonwealth. I have the luxury of speaking with superintendents every day, and I do get to hear the stories about other communities and what people are going through. And I don't believe anyone has the support for their students and their families that we have with our current committee, and whatever that committee may be in the future, I, I would anticipate that that would be the same. I would like to express my appreciation for you taking the risk to commit to me for five years. I know it's a risk. I don't plan on changing. Anyone who knows me knows I'm pretty rigid in terms of commitment, and when I make a commitment, I stick to it. It's like a professional sport to me. But most importantly, thank you for making the commitment to our, our students. You know, there's 19, I believe we're up to 1,906 students in the district as of today, which is an increase in numbers. Our enrollment is growing, and that's attributed to the teaching staff and the commitment of all of our staff, the relationships that have taken four years and now beginning my fifth year to build with school committee members, new school committee members, you know, so important, families and our students. We're just getting going. And COVID threw us a loop without a text message that it was coming, as I oftentimes say, and that hasn't stopped us from moving forward. So I look forward to the next five years to be able to continue to do this good work and work with the folks that are here, whether it be school committee or our families, students, and especially the staff. 320 employees in the school district, that's a lot of people. So I am very much appreciative of this opportunity and, and take it as another challenge in my life, which seems again to be a sport that I really do enjoy. And I promise to this committee with your commitment to me that I will stick by that and see things through until the end, whatever that may be. Maybe five years, maybe it's more, and maybe I'll be retired by then. You never know, but I don't think so. I think I have a few more years left in me after that. So I, I did want to express my appreciation and your willingness to take risks with me. You won't be sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have general information, recommendations. There are no delegates or visitors this evening?
There are none.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Next, the minutes of October 4th, 2021. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of that date, October 4th, 2021?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Swob. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob, yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Next up is financial and business procedures. We have warrant SVW 22-6 and the amount of $363,742.37. Can I get a motion for that warrant and that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob, yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Next up are payroll warrant and budget transfers, which I believe there are none this evening?
No.
Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds. We have a number of buildings and grounds. With the exception of the Winter Lodge of Elk's Hoop Shot, I would ask that we put them all together. I'll read them out loud. Can I get a motion to grant the Winter Gymnastics Academy, Gymnastics Invitational, the William P. Fortbanks PTO School Committee Candidate Forum, the Winter P. Gorman Fortbank School PTO, and ATC PTO Trunk Retreat, and also the Winter School of Performing Arts Holiday Show. I'd ask for a motion to approve all of those, provided that the paperwork is complete on them.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci. Can I get a roll call? Oh, any discussion on them?
I checked the paperwork. It was on, please. So we're good.
Excellent. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob, yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Next up in that buildings and grounds is the Winter Lodge of Elk's, Elk's Hoop Shoot. I'm anticipating that someone will make a motion to waive that rental fee due to the nature of the event.
I will make a motion to approve the contract and waive the rental fee.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote on the Winter Lodge of Elk's, Elk's Hoop Shoot with a waiver, waiver of the rental fee?
Ms. Barry, yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay, moving forward, we have general functions, reports, subcommittee report from curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on October 5th with two members of the NIESC meeting committee, and they were just interested in how we operate with each other. And I, the nice thing about that is that Lisa had talked to the committee, and they were willing to submit their questions prior to the meeting. So we were prepared, thanks to Lisa's really excellent summary. It's interesting, you don't think you're doing anything for NIESC until you realize all the things we were doing for three years, even though they're not calling NIESC. So I think it was very helpful for us to summarize some of the work that we've done in the last three years. Essentially, what they're, to me, what they were looking for is how we interact and how we support the Winter School System and how we support the superintendent, the teachers, the curriculum, the budget, and the policies. And so we did go through each one of those, and we talked about the things that we've done. I'll just read a couple of things, but then I'm not going to read the whole thing because I put them in, they're in the minutes. It'd be like to see the curriculum, meeting minutes. But they wanted to know what we consider to be the strengths and weaknesses of high school. Remember, this is just for high school. We weren't talking about the other schools. We talked about the improvements that we've made in technology. Obviously, the facilities are really clear. The student-staff ratios have remained pretty constant. And we've done a lot on professional development. We have, we have encouraged some software that really helped us keep track of what teachers are doing for that professional development. Clearly, a full-time curriculum director has made a big difference. Also, a school resource officer. We've had threat assessment teams. We've had HR hires. So we've, I think we've done really well by the high school, and it was clear in the reports that, that when they looked at what they were doing in curriculum as an example and curriculum design and written, it was pretty extensive, and I think they were quite impressed with that. They did ask one thing that was kind of an interesting question. To what extent do you feel that there's a shared understanding among the school community of what optimal or effective learning looks like in the school? Well, we, we talked about that as being a work in progress and that not everybody agrees, of course, with everything. And some people are more interested in looking at curriculum and looking at, at what we're doing in the schools and want to get engaged with that and, and comment on it. Other parents are not quite as enthusiastic, not, either, either they don't have the time or they're, they don't have the interest or inclination to look at that. But I think, I think we're, we're improving that, and I think that more parents know what we're doing, and I think there's a, a greater commitment overall in the community of finding out what's going on. So they wanted to know about vision and mission statements, et cetera. But it, overall, it was a very positive meeting, I thought. I don't know how the rest of you, I think all of us felt that, and all of us contributed our pieces to, to that, and Lisa and Lori also chimed in. So they seemed pleased when they left about what we had to say and how we work together, and so.
We look forward to their report coming out.
We do.
And that should be out soon. The committee will get back together, and they have to submit their findings to their higher-ups, who will look at those findings. And, you know, the last meeting we had, we felt very assured that we would continue with accreditation at the high school. That was the vibe that we got from the group, that we always have things to work on. You never come out of an audit, nor do you want to come out of an audit looking perfect. We always want to be pushed to work on things. So we look forward to their recommendations as we move along. It helps us. We'll be redesigning our strategic plan for the next three years, starting in January and carrying right through the summer. I would anticipate some of their recommendations would be part of our plan, our strategic plan moving forward, focused in on the high school. So it's, it's a helpful guide to, for us, and it's an outside look at how we're doing. So we'd be appreciative of, of that when we get that report. We'll bring that back to the committee and share it with the community as well.
Excellent. Anything further, Ms. Swob? Superintendent's contract, subcommittee, I believe that was pretty much discussed with the ratification of the contract. Okay, superintendent's report.
Yes, few typical updates for this time of the school year. Our enrollment is up to 1,906 students. We're psyched about that. Our enrollment was obviously, through COVID, down a little bit. We had a number of students that were participating in homeschooling and virtually school, virtual schooling during la, all of last school year. As you recall, we were fully remote in the beginning, and then around December, started coming back with our high-needs students, and then in April, everybody was back. So it's nice to see that enrollment number going up. I believe we were about 1,846 at this time last year, and now we are up to 1,906 and climbing. We have new students coming in every day. So it's important to recognize that uptick. It helps with chapter 70 monies that are coming in, and, and it certainly, you know, is nice to have as many students in our classrooms as we can. Vocational school status this year, folks have been asking. It's sort of been a hot topic. We have 61 students enrolled at the Volk as of October 1st, and we have seven students attending Essex Tech as of October 1st. Some information on charter schools. We don't have this year's charter school numbers yet. We anticipate those in the coming weeks, but last year, we had 21 students who reside in Winthrop attend charter schools outside of the town.
How many, sorry?
21. The cost of, to the community, the cost of the town, or the less money that we received in chapter 70 from students going to charter schools, was $322,681. Many of these charter schools are specific. There's the Math and Science Charter School in Saugus, there's Phoenix Charter Academy. So if anyone is interested to see how many kids went to each one, I certainly can provide you with that data. I would say that the number is probably close this year. There were only two seniors involved in that number of 21, and this is all grades. So it's, it's for kindergarten through, through high school. So as soon as the updated data for this year comes out, I'll let you know. Another topic of conversation over the last few weeks, I've received several questions about what its total percentage of students that we have attending Winthrop Public Schools that qualify for free and reduced lunch. As of today, we're at about 52%. And we are anticipating that number to climb because we're still receiving and reaching out to parents to ask them if they haven't already sent in free and reduced lunch applications to see if they qualify to please do that, so that we can make sure that they receive whatever entitlement they are eligible for. So we're still seeking some of those applications, but 52% of our students right now qualify for free and reduced lunch. School choice, what does that actually mean? So school choice means a number of things, but I want to talk about school choice. We are not a school choice-accepting district, meaning you have to live in this community in order to go to school in this community. You also, any student in Winthrop, even though we don't take students in that don't live in the community, any one of our children could apply to another school district that does accept school choice. So I'll give you an example. Beverly Public Schools, last year, I didn't check them this year, but last year, they were a school choice-accepting program. So if a student from Winthrop decided they wanted to go to Beverly Public Schools, they could apply to go there and go through the acceptance process, depending upon how many seats they have. There are other aspects of school choice, and, and currently, we have no students that have left the Winthrop Public Schools to go to another public school that's a formal public school like Winthrop Public Schools, Everett Public Schools, Chelsea Public Schools. However, included in that topic is virtual schools. However, included in that, um, topic is virtual schools. So a virtual school also qualifies as a school choice. So there are two virtual schools that Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts, um, and the Department of Education recognize as a public school. So we're not walking through the door of a school. We're not getting in the car and driving to Beverly. We're attending school virtually from home. And that is Teca Academy, T E C A, T E C C A Academy and, um, another academy called the Virtual School Academy. Both of those schools are, um, schools that are recognized by the Department of Education in the state of Massachusetts. So last year, again, this year's data on who we have attending is not fully certified yet. So once I get this year's data, I can let you know about that. But last year's data, which is a little bit skewed, um, shows that the Winthrop Public Schools had five full-time students attending either Teca or Virtual School, the Virtual School, which is the name of it, which they need to change. And we also had five additional students who attended for a portion of last school year. So you, the, the school district, it, uh, or the town, the chapter seventy money goes by the dates that the child attended. So we had some kids that went from September to June. We had some kids that went September to December and when we opened up for our high needs kids, they came back. And we had some kids that came back in April. So, uh, for a total of, um, ten individual students. And again, some went full-time and, and there were five students who did a partial year. The ironic part of, of that is that's the highest number we've had in a long time. Some students go and, and choose a virtual school, um, for a host of reasons. They may not feel, um, they may not be well enough to come to school physically in person. Um, but with COVID, we had some students who needed to keep that option or wanted that option versus our full remote, um, or wanted to maintain that option when we went back to school full-time. So I believe that's why that number was so high. The cost for those, for the virtual school attendance from our chapter seventy foundation monies during the twenty-one, uh, twenty-two, no, the twenty, twenty to twenty-one school year, uh, was four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So I would anticipate that number is going to be dramatically less this year now that we're all back full-time in person, um, and based on our enrollment numbers going up. So next meeting, I, maybe not the next meeting, might be the meeting after that, depending when we get our numbers. I will share those exact figures with, um, the school committee. Just a couple of other little points. Crossing Guards, another hot topic. Um, I did meet with the TSAC as requested by the school committee, um, last week. Spoke to the, the, uh, TSAC group about what our concerns were with crossing guards, the fact that although we have advertised significantly, we have not been able to recruit people, um, to do that particular job. Um, we know that we have a number of hotspots in the community where we really need crossing guards. Um, I asked them to help me identify some more of those hotspots. So if they knew of any, I also spoke, Mr. Callar is part of that. If there's anybody that knows the hotspots in the streets in the town, it's Stephen Callar. So he gave me s- an indication, uh, of what he may thought would be those spots, that if we had one more body, where should they go first? Um, and that's very helpful and they're going to continue to work on, on strategies to try to support us. Um, we've also reached out to, um, a security agency who are com- were due to come out this past Thursday. They had to cancel on us. They're going to come out next Thursday. Um, they are going to tour the town with me. We'll identify the hotspots. They'll look at those hotspots for us. Um, they have a part of their company, places crossing guards. They're, they're based out of Plymouth, Mass. They hire and place crossing guards, um, for communities. What the cost associated with that, uh, is going to be is unknown because they come out and do their assessment and their evaluation first. So we, you know, it's sort of a last ditch effort to get sort of like a placement agency, uh, to support, uh, the school district. So we'll see what that, um, might look like and if they have the bodies to do that and, and if they're able to provide us with that service, I will bring that back before the school committee to talk about, uh, where we might be able to, to support that. Um, it probably won't be within the current school budget, so it'll probably be, uh, a recommendation to have the money taken from somewhere else. Where that somewhere else will be will be dependent upon what the total amount is. Uh, and then I will look into the possible, um, funding sources, whether it is COVID relief money, whether it's the town, or whether it's movement of some of the line items in our own budget to relieve money to be able to provide that service. So I just want the folks to understand that we are actively, it is a topic that comes up almost daily and the safety of our, our kids, uh, is paramount. Um, working with the police department and continuing to keep them up to date on speeding, on people that are not following the rules, uh, whether it's with idling cars or whether it's with, you know, not stopping at crosswalks. Uh, we are not shy to, uh, inform the police department of all of those things and that happens on the daily. Um, it's, it's not something we communicate to parents that we've called the police department six times today or we've reported seven cars today. Um, but it does happen in each school building as needed by the principals or the assistant principals. Um, and the police department, as always, is, is extremely respectful and responsive to us. Quick note on, um, professional development. We have, um, the five district partnership. I included that. That's our partnership with Everett, Chelsea, Revere, Malden, and Winthrop. Um, we work very closely with these three communities because we share a lot of the same kids. So kids who move from these communities move into our community. It originated in which we were trying to align curriculum across all the districts so that when kids were moving in between districts, if you finished fractions in Everett and you moved to Winthrop, you were at pretty much the same entry point in Winthrop with your curriculum. And it made a, a heck of a lot of sense. We've, we've managed to, um, to finalize a lot of that work and we've now moved on to some, um, different topics that we believe we need to, to work together as the five communities and centralize some of this work for the, for the sole purpose. One, it's money, but two, professional development, if, if you're looking to hire somebody to come out to talk about something, um, you're, you're very well set if you have five communities contributing to that cost of that one person. We're all following the same, uh, recommendations and standards from the Department of Education and each one of our districts has a strategic plan. Um, not every district in the Commonwealth has a strategic plan. And professional development, uh, for all five districts has many of, uh, many similar goals because it's being, you're, you're following the Department of Ed's recommendations as well. So this year, uh, last year was the second year of our, uh, five community full-day professional development. So all five communities come together and share the same professional development. Pre-COVID, we did it in person. Lots of good stuff come out of that. You get relationships with other staff members. You see what's happening in other schools. Um, you make contact with other people that have something you want, whether it's how they teach a certain subject, um, or what they use for materials and supplies and curriculum. And you're able to collaborate with five different school districts and really network, uh, and find professionals in their fields. And we typically use our own staff to do those presentations in the professional development. So this, uh, uh, November 2nd, next Tuesday, is a full day of no school for students and a full day of professional development for our staff. And our entire, uh, staff is participating in the five district partnership, uh, Professional Development Day. It is titled culturally responsive teac- teaching, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, we are, um, hold on, I lost my place. Um, the theme for the day continues to be equity for all and we have a mix of professional presenters, um, that will be, uh, and high keynote speakers. This year, the two keynote speakers at Tyrone Howard, he'll give the morning keynote and Adolf Brown, uh, is also speaking. These are two well sought-after educators, motivators, and, uh, folks who have done some deep-seated work on equity, inclusion, um, and diversity. I put in your packet all of the course offerings. I think there's close to eighty different course offerings. So throughout the entire school day, teachers will be actively engaged in professional development that they are picking from a library of things to attend. So you may be in a course with teachers from all five different districts. Um, and there's multiple opportunities throughout the day. It's mandatory. We take attendance. We know who has participated. We do, uh, an evaluation at the end and that helps drive our leadership group in the five district partnership on where do we go from here. Um, and it is the overall theme of our school district, uh, here in Winthrop throughout the year. And we have other professional development activities coming on that same theme, um, that will piggyback on, on this particular day. So it's nice to hear that the teachers are excited about it. Um, and, you know, again, it's aligned with our strategic plan. It's anticipated. The teachers have had a lot of input into what we are offering, uh, during those sessions and, um, folks are looking forward to it, which you can't always say about professional development because there's been years of, of initiative fatigue. That's something we found out when we, when, you know, we started with our strategic plan. Try this initiative and then next week we're going to switch it up on you. We're going to tell you to focus on something different. Uh, we haven't done that in four years. We've been focusing on some very specific things. So it's nice to see the teachers pumped up, um, to have that, uh, opportunity. Um, and I think, for me, that might be it.
Okay. Next up is homeschool applications. Do we have any?
We have none this week, no.
None this week? Next up would be personnel appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, release of absence.
Yes, we have, uh, two, no appointments this evening, but two resignations. Um, one from an ESP in the district who has taken a new position and, uh, same from our, um, IT, um, lead, uh, Petro Kiu has, um, moved to a, a more of a company setting and not an educational setting. Um, and, uh, both folks have done a great job for us and, and, you know, we wish them well in their next endeavor. We have no retirements and, um, just like we post for crossing guards, which is like the continuous posting. We should just leave a continuous posting up for lunch monitors. Uh, we do need a lunch monitor at the William P. Gorman. We have posted our, um, a couple of athletic positions. We'll have more postings at our next meeting for, uh, additional athletic positions and, um, an ELL teacher at the Gorman Fort Banks and an ESP at the R T Cummings. And we have, nobody, um, has submitted a leave of absence.
Excellent. Next up, we have unfinished business, which there is none, which brings us to the adjournment.
Most of the grid.
Motion adjourned, paid by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Ms. Powell. Have a roll call vote for the record, Patty?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you.